Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberating justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the democracy alive in our country and for the freedom to worship you. Help the elected government and all in position of power and authority to govern wisely and for the for the common good of all. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we will begin with roll call. Mr. Resnick?
Here.
Mr. Braun?
Here.
Chair is here. Ms. Borelli is not here tonight. Mr. Gorman?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Yeah.
Mr. Swan?
Here.
Mr. Fagioli? All right. Next item is citizens' participation on agenda items. You may come up and please give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. All right, seeing none, we'll move on with reports of borough officers. First is our financial advisor.
Thank you, Madam President. You all have received your reports late, but you received them. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the financial advisor? I'll entertain a motion to accept the financial advisor's report and pay the bills.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Fagioli made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Resnick seconded. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Fagioli?
Yes.
Motion carries. I also need to, a motion to approve the minutes for the March 18th council meeting. So my apologies for going out of order on that.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Cannon made a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Swan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Police chief's report. We have our written reports. I don't believe we have anything additional to add to that.
No.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the police chief's report.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Gorman made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Braun seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the fire chief's report.
I have nothing to add.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the fire chief's report. All right, Mr. Gorman made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fagioli seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Engineers' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The passive park improvements have been substantially completed. The contractor submitted for final payment. We're working through a punch list, and we will make that recommendation accordingly. The sanitary sewer cleaning contract at U Services informed us that they will start the work early summer. The contractor, as you're all aware, that's working on the school, has started work at night on Springfield Road and has recently asked us if they can continue to work at night. He asked through the borough, not simply my office, but he asked through borough officials. Due to the lack of working time during the day, you can only get about six hours in a day as opposed to the evening hours where they can get at least eight hours. And this year's road program, considering the new deadline for the use of liquid fuels funds implemented by the county councils encouraged to consider a scope of work for this year's road program. I expect to have a preliminary list of work ready for the borough managers' review and comment within two weeks. The goal would be to finalize that scope of work at the May meeting and authorize advertisements so the contract can be awarded by the June meeting. And then finally, under the engineers' report on the agenda, there is a motion for your consideration, 2025 authorizing the submission of the Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Program Grant Application. Those funds, what we're applying for are funds to supplement the addition, the funds that we have already received for the Madison Ave. Storm Sewer System.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-06 authorizing the submission of a Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Program Grant Application from the Commonwealth Financing Authority.
I'll make that motion.
All right, and Mr. Fagioli made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Gorman seconded. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Fagioli?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
That's it, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the engineers' report.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Gorman made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Fagioli seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the solicitors' report. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize for coming late. That Springfield Road work got me as I was calming down. But I have two matters for council's attention tonight. One is, the first is an action item as described on the agenda, which would be a request to approve a resolution to amend the civil service regulations to conform the physical fitness requirements to the Pennsylvania Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission standards. So at our workshop meeting, we did hear from Chief Rockenbach that the Civil Service Commission is requesting that we, the council, approve a change to our civil service rules and regulations relating to physical fitness testing. We have a, as council may know, the first step when new police officers applicants are made is that there is a physical test, physical fitness test that must be passed. If the applicant passes the physical fitness test, then they move on to the written and the verbal tests that come afterwards. But they don't go any farther if they don't pass the physical fitness test. So Chief Rockenbach and the commission had looked at those standards, and it's the typical, you know, run a mile in such and such a time, run 100 yards at such a time, so many push-ups, so many pull-ups, all that type of thing. There is a more up-to-date way to do it. I think the chief is recommending the municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission is a Pennsylvania commission which establishes the rules and regulations for cadets that go into a police academy and establishes the requirements to graduate from the police academy and pass what's called the Act 120 test and be certified. So this is the, this new set of physical standards is based on something called the Cooper Health Standards, which is a national way of looking at it. Instead of just establishing one set, it breaks it down into various age groups and whatnot, and is thought to be more up-to-date and more representative of, you know, physical fitness as opposed to the sort of old, you know, high school gym requirements. So, and this would keep us standard with and align us with, you know, one of our basic requirements is an officer has to be Act 120 certified, so they would have to pass these physical fitness requirements in order to become Act 120 certified. So if that's our basic requirement, we would want them to do the same. So that's what's recommended by the chief and the commission is to delete our current physical testing requirements and insert into Section 4.8 of our civil service rules and regulations the new physical fitness test requirements that, as, as are current with the Pennsylvania Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions for Mr. McLean?
So I would ask that council then approve that resolution to adopt those new standards.
So I will entertain a motion to approve an amendment to the civil service regulations to confer, conform the physical fitness requirements to the Pennsylvania Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission standards.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Cannon made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Gorman seconded. Do we need a roll call?
No.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you. The second matter I just wanted to report on again, we don't take any action on this, but, and I did report on it at the workshop meeting. The council and the members of the public will recall that back in late 2023, after experiencing a series of problems during 2023 with the Rose Bar located on Baltimore Pike, council and the mayor did take action to go to court to have the bar declared what's popularly called a nuisance bar. And we did that, and we were successful in having an agreement put in place with the court and the Rose Bar whereby they would have to close earlier each evening, or they closed for a period of six months altogether. And then after that, for an additional period of six months, they had to close early and have additional standards relating to the training of their security personnel as overseen by the chief. We also, in late 2023, participated in the hearing before the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for the renewal of their license. Every four years, every establishment with a liquor license must have their license renewed, and it's done on a county-by-county basis. So in '23, all the bars in Delaware County had to have their licenses renewed. While we couldn't become a party and become actively involved, we did engage with the Bureau of Liquor Enforcement through the, through the chief and at the direction of the mayor in order to raise our objections to the licensing of the Rose Bar, or at least to have the, ask the LCP to impose conditions on the bar. So there was a hearing where testimony was presented, and they said it would take some time to reach a decision, and they were right because it was just about a year later that they finally came down with their decision, and they decided to grant a license to the Rose Bar, but it is conditioned, is conditional license. And I'll just give the public some of the conditions that have been imposed by the LCP for the entire four-year term. So they have to have particular attention to, and they must run new employee orientations, training for alcohol service personnel, special training for the manager and owner, displaying of responsible alcohol service signage, and they must obtain all their certifications of compliance with the Liquor Control Board. The board has limited their hours of operation. They must close by 1:00 a.m. They must maintain a good working order of security and surveillance system consisting of a minimum of at least 18 security cameras. At least 12 cameras will be located inside the premises, and we give a complete view of all licensed area of the premises. At least six would be located outside. There should be at least one security person at, on every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 8:00 p.m. until one half hour after closing time. And they need certain certifications and training, once again, that will be reported to Chief Rockenbach. During all time when security is required, they must utilize a metal detection device to scan all patrons entering the premises. And for anybody that goes outside and comes back in, they must be again scanned too. They also must have what's called a transaction scan device, which is, identifies all patrons entering the establishment. This is, in essence, one of those scanners that you see when you go to the Acme and buy wine or liquor, that they scan your driver's license on the back to make a record of who you are. And once again, if you leave the premises, you must into the premises. They must maintain a written list of barred patrons, meaning patrons that have been excluded, and it is illegal and a violation of their license to allow certain types of persons to, to, to enter the premises. So they must maintain a written list of those people that would be available for inspection. Any breach of the agreement is constitute sufficient cause for citation or non-renewal or termination of the license. So those are, like I said, I think are the key provisions there. So it's, it's, it's weighty conditions, I think, they've placed on them, especially regarding the security and surveillance. We are happy to report, we did speak to the, to the chief, and really, since the time that the borough had reached an agreement with them, and since the time of their reopening, we have not had police incidents or problems at the facility. They have gotten in line, so to speak. So the actions taken by the mayor and council, you know, have had their intended effect. And, you know, at least for the next four years, you know, this conditional licensing agreement, you know, will give added weight to that. So we should expect, I, I hope to expect compliance with that and no further police problems at the Rose Bar. And I think there certainly, you know, all, all the bar owners should talk to each other or know each other, and so we, we hope that, you know, this, what would occur here, you know, has reached, we, we know it has reached many of the other bar owners, if not all of them in town, and we certainly didn't have anything like the problems with the other bars that we deal with the Rose. But we hope that all of them will be cognizant now that, you know, if they do become a nuisance bar, you know, this mayor and council has, you know, stated their intention to take action against them and go, both go to court and also raise objections with the Liquor Control Board and their Licensing Enforcement Division. So those, that's the information light on my head, and that's all I have, Madam President.
Any questions for Mr. McLean?
How long do they have before they have to meet all these requirements?
I, I believe it goes into effect, you know, now, immediately.
Okay, and also, in the past, they've had armed guards there. Is that going to be a problem for us?
Not a problem for us. There's a, and I always forget, I apologize, the, the act number, the certification. I, I think it's the same act where people get certified as like detectives.
Yeah.
Where those armed guards need to be certified and have that certification. Again, that's something that Chief Rockenbach oversaw with them. That was part of our agreement that we don't necessarily have a problem with them having the armed guards. We want the armed guards to be know, you know, the rules and what to do. So, and again, my understanding from the chief is that after they reopened, you know, they, they, they have had guards, and we have not had an issue since that time. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the solicitor's report. Mr. Swan made the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Fagioli seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, or carries. Community Development and Code Enforcement, Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any issues to mark.
Any questions for Mr. Gould? I entertain a motion to accept the Community Development and Code Enforcement report.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Cannon made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gorman seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we have the managers' report. And the agenda item we have for that is a motion to approve the purchase of a 2010 Ford F-150 aerial bucket van ladder for installation of the veterans' flags, the Fourth of July banners, other parking lot banners, and minor tree trimming throughout the borough with a purchase price of $8,000. And that is all we have on the agenda for managers'. Does anyone have any questions about that?
You got one more on the back for the managers?
Yes, sorry about that. No, we do have one more item.
Need a motion first.
So, does anyone have any questions about the F-150 purchase?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. I know I was approached by a couple of residents concerning some of the flags, and, and I talked to the mayor about it because he spearheaded the establishment of putting in and the installation of flags, and there was some problems and with the way some of the things were done, and, and, but to correct them, we really had no way to correct them. We had a friend in the borough on occasion that would help us out, but I think this is a really a good move, a way to honor the veterans and to keep it in, in a presentable viewpoint so that now, when things, the wind or weather destroys a flag, it can be rectified. I think, I think it's a much better statement about our veterans who are served from our community, and I just want to say, you know, I'm glad that we're able to take care of that.
Any other questions regarding the F-150? I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a 2010 Ford F-150 aerial bucket van ladder for the purchase price of $8,000.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Braun made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Resnick seconded, and we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Fagioli?
Yes.
And my apologies, the other item we have is the Walnut Street Parking Lot Permit Plan. And I, we had presented at the caucus a plan, but I think Mr. Fagioli and Mr. Cannon wanted to make an edit to that.
Who's?
Well, they were supposed to approach us at the last meeting they had. They came to us and we said to them that, for the committee gather and meet with us before this next meeting. They never approached us with that meeting. So we went, we met together and to approach this problem. So we're going to offer them two parking spots for a year overnight parking, and we're residents on Lansdowne, I mean, on Lansdowne Avenue. Sorry. On, uh, Walnut Street.
Walnut Street. Okay. So basically, up to two parking permits per household, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And we're, we're supposed to do a study on our parking too, right?
Yes, we have a grant to do borough-wide study.
The whole Clifton Heights Park, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. All right. Any questions? All right, do we need to do a motion for this, or?
I, I guess it wouldn't hurt. I, I don't think formally, it's, it's not an ordinance change or anything like that, but just to make sure everybody's in agreement. I know it's been the subject of a lot of discussion, so, and as I understand it, what's described in the, the agenda is being tabled, and the change is going to be now that any of the residents on Walnut Avenue can have two parking permits per household. And it's, it's non-exclusive, obviously, so that, you know, they're not guaranteed a spot, but the idea is it just seemed to be unworkable trying to come up with the perfect number or situation because there was always somebody that was an exception, you know?
One thing is, because there's people that work around that area, and once some people move to their borough residents, these people parked there, they're not going to kill one of their lives, so it's some way to help them out, so this way.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve two parking permits per household for Walnut Street residents for the Walnut Street Parking Lot. All right, Mr. Fagioli made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Cannon seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And that is it for the managers' report. Any questions on the items, action items? I'll entertain a motion to accept the managers' report.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Gorman made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Swan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next are our council reports. Mr. Swan?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Mr. Resnick?
I have nothing.
All right, Mr. Fagioli?
Well, Tommy told me that the approach you were with Walnut Street Park, and that should be done pretty soon. We got to close the contract for equipment, and he will be installing it. It should be up in a month, maybe a couple of months, two months. I mean, operating Duke of Philadelphia.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cannon?
Uh, just one thing, Madam Chair. There's talk of cutbacks in SEPTA service to the whole entire system, and you know, our borough is, is served in a large part by SEPTA with the train, the trolley, I believe the 113 bus coming down. the train, the trolley, I believe the 113 bus coming down Baldwell Avenue. It's an important service to the seniors and, and to the people who work outside the borough, whether in Philadelphia, Wilmington, and just traveling wherever they need to, to travel. Without getting into even the environmental issues, but I want to mention the traffic congestion is, would be added to if they cut back service to any of these lines. I just want to encourage everyone in the borough to call the state rep, state senators, SEPTA themselves, to let them know our disapproval in cutting the service to our community. I think it's a necessary function and a vital function, so, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Braun?
I have nothing.
So, on Sunday, this past Sunday, we had our egg hunt, so I wanted to thank people who were involved and helped out, helped out with this. There were a lot of people who helped make this event happen. Appreciate the support of the Borough Office, getting the eggs order and helping get things organized for us. I want to thank all of council, Mr. Gould, Borough Manager, for all the candy donations or our goodie bags. We had some residents, Lenny, me, Franny Smith, helped with donations, goodie bag assembly, Judge Kelly Makozi Agiri, she helped with the donations, the goodie bag assembly, and Day of setup, and then Bruce and the mayor came out, helped us set up and were there for the event, and of course, the fire department for giving transportation and escort to the bunny. Appreciate that, so, it's a very nice event, everyone seemed to enjoy themselves, so thank you, everyone, for who was a part of that. And then tomorrow, the Fourth of July Committee is having a planning meeting at 7:00 PM at the Broadway, so if anyone's free, wants to join, help out, we'd love to see you there. And that's all I have. Mr. Gorman?
Last week I had met with Representative Boyd, there was a bill in the House recognizing our 911 dispatchers as first responders, which as of right now, they are not, and she was gracious enough to sign on as a co-sponsor, and I thank her greatly for that. As somebody who spent 32 years in the 911 center, I know how important it is, and he's a lot for those guys and girls. But I was informed that it passed the House unanimously, and it's on its way to the Senate, so hopefully it'll pass unanimously as there as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you for listening. All right, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I have several items to bring up tonight. The first one is a declaration of disaster emergency. I'm just going to read it to you. This is coming from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Borough of Clifton Heights. I, Mark Campbell, Mayor of the Borough of Clifton Heights, do hereby declare a disaster emergency exists for the Borough of Clifton Heights, Pennsylvania pursuant to the authority invested in the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code PL 13-32 on November the 26th of 1978, and Amendment of 35 PASCSA and 7501B because of the intimate determination of the advanced life support and basic life supports services provided by the Crozier Medical Systems due to the bankruptcy proceedings filed by Prospect Medical Holdings. This declaration shall remain in effect until revoked by me en rating or in seven days unless revoked by the majority of Clifton Heights Borough Council, whichever shall occur earlier. The local emergency management plans for the political subdivisions of the Borough of Clifton Heights are, are hereby activated, and the furnishing of aid and assistance thereunder is hereby authorized. The emergency provisions of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Service Code relating to contracts and obligations, the temporary suspension of formal requirements, and the employment of personnel are hereby enabled. The borough shall cooperate and cooperate with and coordinate with public and private agencies or entities to achieve any purpose of this part. I hereby set my hand to the decoration this 15th day of April 2025. So a resolution for what I just read you is hereby proclaimed for the declaration of disaster emergency. Whereas Prospect Medical Holdings, parent company of the Crozier Health System operating in Delaware County, Pennsylvania, has filed for bankruptcy in the Court of the United States of America, and in such findings, has declared that it may close the Crozier Medical Systems, and whereas the Crozier Medical Systems provide advanced life support services, paramedics, and basic life support services, ambulances, to the Borough of Clifton Heights. And whereas, with little or no notice, the Crozier Health System could close and/or terminate the provisions of the advanced life support and basic life supports services to the Borough of Clifton Heights, thus creating an emergency for the residents and citizens of Clifton Heights Borough. Whereas, excuse me, whereas the mayor and council of the Borough of Clifton Heights, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, wish to plan for such an emergency and be prepared to contract, obtain, and/or provide alternate advanced life services and/or basic life services, support services, we do hereby find that a disaster emergency exists on and since April 11th of 2025 in the Borough of Clifton Heights due to the possible intimate termination of such services without notice to the Borough of Clifton Heights. Now, therefore, it will be resolved this 15th day of April 2025 by the council of the Borough of Clifton Heights and approved by the mayor. That pursuant to the general authority invested in the Borough of Clifton Heights by the Pennsylvania Emergency Code 35 PS 7501B and 35 PS 75035, a local disaster emergency is hereby declared to exist and is intimate as the April 11th, 2025. The response and recovery aspects of all Clifton Heights Emergency Management plans are hereby activated, and, and is furnishing of aid and assistance thereunder is hereby The proper officers, agencies, and personnel of the Borough of Clifton Heights are hereby authorized to carry out all authority, powers, and duties provided in the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Code. Any other applicable Pennsylvania law and such decrees, decrees or proclamations as may to, as may be made by the governor of the Pennsylvania and the mayor of the Borough of Clifton Heights, including and not limited to those powers of 35S and 7501 regarding contracts and obligations, temporary suspensions of formal requirements, and employment of personnel, that because the length of the disaster emergency indeterminate, that the time this declaration shall remain in effect until such time as terminated by the future actions of the Clifton Heights Borough Council or 100 days from the date whatever is sooner. That was a lot to read, I'm sorry.
Would you like Mr. McLean to give some additional?
Yes, please. Mayor, Madam President, council, or members of the public, so, obviously, everybody's aware of the situation with Crozier Chester's system. Crozier's system does provide what they call ALS, Advanced Life Support, which is paramedics, as well as basic life support, which are ambulances. Our Clifton Heights Fire Company actually holds the certification for the ambulance that is run out of Clifton Heights, and what we, what they have is in agreement with Crozier to staff the ambulance. So, for our, for our ambulance, basically, Crozier is our, is our staffing agent. So, that has continued, and it will continue, we've gotten no notice that they, they want to turn it off. We are different from Upper Darby in terms of the way our services have been provided and structured, and for anybody that's attended these meetings for the last year or so, you, you heard about our discussions previously when we changed from Trinity or Fitzgerald Mercy over to Crozier for very good reasons. So, but Crozier continues to provide those services, we, in, in the short term here, the ambulance is still responding. What Crozier does provide is the advanced life support services or paramedic, I believe our closest car runs out of the firehouse over at Westbrook Park, Primus Sea King, that, that covers our area. Now, all that being said, in order to have, if you are certified to provide an ambulance or paramedic, one of the things, one of the rules that applies is you have to go wherever you're sent. So, even if Crozier were to go out of business tomorrow, there would still be paramedic services provided to Clifton Heights and still be ambulance service provided to Clifton Heights. That may come from other companies, it may come from the main line system, from Riddle, from Penn System, from Trinity, all those systems would have to cover any, any areas of Delaware County where Crozier is operating. Obviously, the, the fear is that it will take longer, you know, it's not an ambulance that is around the corner from us, and we, you know, our ambulance is getting dispatched. They, they had what they called a brownout for the last several days in Upper Darby, where Upper Darby couldn't reach an agreement with Crozier for whatever reason, and Crozier wasn't providing the ambulance services there, so our ambulance, you know, along with Haverford and Woodland and Norwood and Collingdale, you know, all had to, to fill in, anybody that's got an ambulance. So, so really what we're talking about here is, there will be a paramedic, there will be an ambulance, but, you know, resources are stretched thin. So what the declaration of disaster emergency does is it enables the borough to be more flexible in terms of its contracting. Obviously, people have heard when we let contracts, if they're above a certain amount, we, we bid them out. Here, this is not a service that we would typically be bidding anyway as a professional service, but it will allow us to be flexible to enter into agreements with other municipalities for providing ambulance or, or paramedic services with private companies to do that on a short-term basis, if, if we have to. Those discussions are already being had. Sunday night, the mayor called for a, a conference call with some of the borough officers and Brits to talk about, you know, some of our short-term solutions and options. We have been planning with the, with the chief and with the fire company, we've been discussing those, so there are both public and private entities that do provide these services that hopefully we can pivot to. It's not ideal, I don't, I don't want to lead anybody on to think that it's, you know, just sort of standard operating procedure, you know, it's not a good thing if Crozier goes out of service for the hospitals or the EMS. But we, we have been planning, you know, knowing that this day likely would come, and, you know, there are options that are available, and putting into effect first the disaster declaration by the mayor, and then the extension of the, the, his declaration is good for seven days unless council extends it, and that's what that resolution is asking to do is basically extend the mayor's declaration for a period of at least 100 days or sooner if council decides to terminate it, so that that flexibility regarding contracting, employment of personnel, and cooperation with other municipalities, we have more flexibility to do those things in the short term. You know, should we wake up tomorrow and get a notice that Crozier's not going to staff our ambulance anymore? Like I said, we, we believe that we're prepared and ready, you know, if that happens, but, you know, it certainly is, is going to be a chaotic situation in the very short term. So, so that's, that's what the legal effect of and why we're doing the, recommending to do the proclamation and now the resolution, and sort of an explanation as to where we are with our paramedic and ambulance services.
So, Mr. Mayor, would you like us to do our council, to do their resolution for you real quick?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion for a resolution for a declaration of disaster emergency due to potential imminent loss of emergency medical services.
Make the motion.
All right, so Mr. Fagioli made a motion.
Second.
Mr. Gorman seconded it. Do a roll call. Mr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Fagioli?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President. The second piece I'd like to read to you is, just give you a little history on it. Councilman John Gorman came to me and explained to me a couple of things about nine one, the nine one, the 9/11 communications, and I totally agree with him, and that's why I decided to put a proclamation together. So, my proclamation reads, recognizing the Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April the 13th through the 19th of 2025, whereas the second full week of April, it has been declared National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week by the Senate and the House of Representatives in the United States of America, and whereas emergencies can occur at any time that requires police, fire, and emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response to law enforcement, fire services, and ambulance services is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of deputies, police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained and relayed to the citizens who access the 911 emergency systems, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are a single vital link to our first respond personnels by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Delaware County Emergency Communications Centers have contribute to the apprehensions of criminals, suppressions of fire, and treat, and treatment of patients, and whereas our public safety telecommunicators serve the public daily in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of their services, each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited passion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. So, I'm sorry. Now, now, therefore, be it proclaimed this 15th day of April 2025 by the mayor, by the mayor of the Borough of Clifton Heights and on behalf of the Borough Council, that all the residents are encouraged to observe the week of April the 13th through the 19th, 2025 as Public Safety Communications Week, recognizing and appreciating the service and importance of the public safety communicators in Delaware County as a vital to the health, safety, and wealth being of our citizenry. So just a couple of items left for my report. Just a little reminder, Saturday, April the 26th, from 9:00 to 12:00 is an e-cycle and drug back in, in Alden Park Lot. That's not here, it's in Alden Park Lot, Saturday, 9:00 to 12:00. Little reminder also, we're still picking up yard waste all month on Mondays and Tuesdays, south on Mondays and north on Tuesdays for the rest of this month. Another reminder of the hometown hero banners will be displayed be displayed at the Borough Conference. If you want your, if you have a banner that's up in Clifton Heights and you want that to be represented in the Borough Conference, please get to me right away. The deadline is May the 1st of this year to submit that. The Easter Egg Hunt, I just want to thank, just like Suzanne said, Suzanne and Bruce was there. Kelly, Kelly Makozi Aguirre was a big help to us. The Civic Association did the bags. The, all the fire guys were there. Okay. I want to thank the Easter Bunny. He, he looked good this year. He had a new, a new look. So he was nice and clean. He didn't, he didn't smell. So. Just so you, for the residents, our monument is, is well on its way across from Borough Park Lot. We got the grass down, the wall is built, the park benches are installed, and the electric has been installed. The monument is no money from Borough Services. We got a grant to do that over there. So there's, we didn't use any of the Borough money to do it. That is it for my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any old business to come before the body? Any new business?
Yes, Madam Chair. I should have brought this up sooner. The Bus Patrol monthly activity report was presented to council tonight. This is for the month from 3:01 to 3:31. Now, we have to remember that primarily buses are run four, five days a week, not seven. So it's not a 30-day report. And that's, it's actually a 20-day report. And in that 20 days, there was 250 citations reviewed, people doing things, passing a school bus while they were loading. There were 233 citations. That's 48 citations a day if you use a four-day, a five-day work week or school week. I, I, you know, when I saw this, it upset me. I just want to remind the residents, you know, that's our kids getting on these buses. I mean, somebody's going to get hurt. Nobody should be in that much of a hurry. I'm glad this is going out to the public on Zoom. I, I just find it utterly appalling and ridiculous that people have to pass a school bus while it's loaded. So I'm asking the public, please be aware, please stop.
John, can I add something to your report?
Sure.
So those numbers that John just told you, they're just for Clifton Heights. Okay? All those numbers just for our borough. So, you know, I actually work for William Penn's School District and it's, it's a lot worse over there. So it's, it's a shame that they're, none of these buses are, are stopped, or none of these people are stopping for the buses.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
I work for Rouge Street too.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure all the school, the school districts, you know?
Any other new business? All right. And then our final item is public participation, general public comment. You can have three minutes. If you could please give your name and address at the podium.
Bonnie Hallahan, 235 Woodbridge. I do have a question. You said you're doing a parking study throughout the borough?
Yes, there was a grant that was awarded.
So we have parking ordinances on the block that are not being enforced. We have cars that are parked out back of people's residence that are not registered, are not insured, they are not inspected, they are smashed in, they are leaking fluids, and it's not addressed. We have cars parking on the sidewalks so bad that you can't get down your steps. And people just ride by and they don't ticket the cars. I mean, I had four trucks on my street, all parked so far on the sidewalk that I couldn't get down my one step. Now, my husband has a hip replacement and walks with a limp, so it's difficult for him. I just think we have parking ordinances that need to be enforced. But the abandoned cars, I have talked to John numerous times. We have one out back that gets a hornet's nest in it every year. That's not inspected, not registered, no insurance. If we're going to do a parking study, I hope we do it boroughwide for the, the back residences too, because that takes away from parking on the street. So I, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. All right. All right. Thank you.